Um, we get to you.
And we are good to go, Chair.
Okay, do I have a thumbs up? Thank you. And video is good? Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2021 Design Commission Regular Video Meeting. My name is Richard Irwin and I am the Design Commission Chair. In accordance with the Proclamation 20-28 and the Governor's Extended Safe Start Order, tonight's Design Commission meeting is using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. The Zoom video of this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom and will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. I want to mention that Governor Inslee's Proclamation 20-28 regarding the Open Public Meetings Act was extended indefinitely until the end of the emergency. CPD Director Jeff Thomas, Senior Planner Robin Propstein, and other staff members are participating in tonight's meeting remotely. Other public audience members are listening to the meeting by telephone or via the Internet. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please ensure that your microphones are turned on for the roll call. Chair Irwin is present. Vice Chair Brandt?
Present.
Commissioner Guanba?
Present.
Commissioner McPherson?
Present.
Commissioner Perez?
Present.
Commissioners Zar?
Present.
And I believe Commissioner Soprano is not present. Commissioners, before we start the business of tonight's meeting, I want to suggest a few rules to help the meeting run smoothly. If a commissioner has a question, please use the raise hand feature. I will do my best to recognize commissioners in the order in which hands are raised. Everyone will be asked to limit himself or herself to one question and to one clarifying question if necessary, so that each board member has a chance to ask a question before a board member is given another chance to ask a question. The first item of business is to review and consider approving the December 9th, 2020 minutes. Please do so, and then I will ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I have one comment about the, the meeting notes on the first page, right in the middle, under the section Public Hearing. Agenda item number one, it says Chair Irwin opened the public hearing. I was opening and closing the meeting. Chair Irwin was not present, so there's just a typo there.
That was just a scrivener's error. I didn't catch. Thank you for that.
Yep. Other than that, they're fine by me.
I agree.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting notes as modified per my recent comment.
A motion exists to approve the minutes with modifications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those who favor.
Claire.
Found each name.
Yes, Commissioner McPherson seconded.
Yes. Okay. I will call out by name and you may say a name or abstain. Chair Irwin says aye. Vice Chair Brandt?
Aye.
Commissioner Guanba?
Aye. Did you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, I can hear you now. Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioners Zar?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Okay, one moment. Okay, tonight's agenda will not include in-person public appearances in accordance with Proclamation 20-28 and the Governor's Extended Safe Start Order. However, individuals wishing to speak live during the appearances portion of our meeting may do so by telephone or using the Zoom teleconferencing application, provided however, they have registered their desire to speak with the administration by 4:00 PM today. Our admin will call on you by name or telephone number when it is your turn to speak. This is the opportunity now for anyone to speak to the Design Commission on any item. All remarks will be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members or staff members. If any person makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the Commission, I may request that that person leave the meeting. When it is your turn to address the Commission, be sure to speak audibly and state your name for the record before you begin to speak. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. The admin will provide you with a 30-second and a 15-second warning when your time is about to expire. Senior Administrator, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the Commission?
No, Chair. There was no one who signed up for appearances.
Okay. If there are no further appearances, we will move on to the next agenda item. We now move to the next item on the agenda, Public Hearing for DSR 20-001, Xinghua Mixed Use Building. This public hearing is for the review of a proposed new four-story mixed-use building in the Town Center Zone. Individuals wishing to make a public comment on this agenda item may do so by telephone or by using the Zoom teleconferencing application, provided however, they registered their desire to make a public comment with a senior admin by 4:00 PM today. Our senior admin will call on you by name or telephone number when it is your turn to speak. The public hearing is now open as of 7:10 PM Pacific Time. Those wishing to provide public testimony, please speak audibly, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. A 15-second warning will be provided when your time is about to expire. Senior Administrator, is there anyone who has signed up for public comment that wishes to address the Commission?
Yes, Chair. We had one person sign up to speak, Connor Rafferty, but I'm not seeing him in the attendee list. Connor, if you're in under another name, can you raise your hand?
Do we wish to continue?
Let's give just one more second. I'm trying to double check that I'm not.
No worries.
Missing anybody and that I just sent him an email as well, so.
No worries.
Just want to try and get him a chance to comment if we can. So Connor, if you're in the audience. Connor going once. Connor going twice.
Andrea, there is a, somebody who just joined by phone with a 425 area code. Could that be him?
He said he was wanting to speak with his camera on. Let's see. The phone who just joined, I just allowed you to speak. Are you Connor by any chance?
No, this is Ryan Healy with R Miller.
Okay, thank you. All right, Chair. I think that we are good to move on.
Okay. If there is no further testimony, the public portion of this hearing is now closed as of 7:12 PM Pacific Time. The second item of business is a brief Code of Ethics discussion. City Clerk Deb Estrada will give a brief presentation.
There she is.
Evening, everyone. Forgive me, I'm, I'm jumping between tasks tonight. I just got home from putting the agenda packet together, so. I'm just going to try and slow down my speech a little bit. I believe Andrea has the PowerPoint presentation for me.
Yep, I was just bringing it up.
Thank you, Andrea.
Present. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. And you even changed the date. Look at you. Okay, so just very briefly, this isn't intended to be a full-blown training. It's more of a overview of what we're doing presently. We've had some changes or some, I mean, not changes necessarily, but we had a couple of incidents in 2020 where we, or 2019 going into 2020. And then in 2020, for a couple of complaints that were brought up, and through the process, we discovered some things that needed to be changed. Some have Andrea advance to the next slide for me. Some of you might be aware that the Code of Ethics was adopted in 2019, excuse me, 2018, and then amended in December of 2019. It was intended to help officials comply with the laws and policies affecting government operations and how to, you know, handle confidential information and deliberations and things of that nature. When it was amended in December of 2019, again, this was responding to a complaint, and so we added some additional guidance on the acceptance of gifts and conflict of interest and so forth. And all of that was codified in our City Code Chapter or Title 2.60. Next slide, Andrea. So in, at our January 19 meeting of just this year, City Council directed staff to make some changes, one of which is coming before all of the boards and commissions to let them know that we are in the process of making some changes and be clear about how the city attorney is available to you to hypothetical situations. We encourage you to reach out to him if you do have any questions and to ask him for an informal opinion. It won't be a, it's not necessarily protected under the attorney-client privilege. So if you would prefer to not create a record, I would encourage you to pick up the phone rather than an email, but I, that's up to the individual commissioner or board member. Next slide, Andrea. So as I said before, there's a little bit of redundancy here between the last slide and this one. The city attorney is available to you for informal opinions. You can reach him. His email is there, and this presentation will be uploaded to your agenda later this evening, so you can reference it if you need to. We're also encouraging people that if you have suggestions regarding the Code of Ethics, things that you've either read somewhere or either in the code or elsewhere that you think might be useful, to please feel free to reach out to us and share your thoughts and opinions. Next slide, Andrea. And finally, as a part of those revisions, we have hired an outside attorney to work on the Code of Ethics. She'll be working directly with Ally Speets, our Chief of Administration, who is, her email is there, and you're welcome to reach out to Ally if you have suggestions regarding our Code of Ethics. And our hope is that the Code of Ethics will be in place sometime in late April. I believe it's on the, we have a discussion item on it on the March 16th meeting with council, and the intention is to come back either the 6th or the 20th of April with a Code of Ethics for the council to adopt. And then we will spring into action and be setting up times to meet with all of you for a more detailed training. With that, I'll open it up to any questions. I realize that was very brief. It was intended to be brief, but we just wanted to make sure you all knew who your contacts were if you had any questions. And I can answer simple questions.
Deb, I may have a simple question, and that is, has there been any change to the, to the rules around how many board members or commissioners, I should say, can gather without it being a, considered a, you know, a meeting and therefore has to be kind of part of the public record?
So that doesn't, I suppose we could write it into the Code of Ethics. As your city clerk, I can tell you just the Open Public Meetings Act is very clear about if a quorum of individuals meet and are discussing business, the business of the Design Commission is the same as the business of the council. If a quorum gathers and is having that discussion without having noticed it, it is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
But that's totally separate from the Code of Ethics that you're talking about now.
It is, it is.
Yep. Okay, that's great. That, that was a simple answer to a simple question.
There you go. Anybody else?
Madam City Clerk, Madam City Clerk, would it be to our advantage within the Code of Ethics as a point of reference to state that where the Public Meetings Act applies, it, it applies over the Code of Ethics, just as a reminder point for folks?
Um, I can certainly make, share that viewpoint with Ally Speets. My thought is that, of course, all of you are required under Washington state law to take the OPMA training through the, through the Attorney General's Office, and you have to sign something stating you completed that training. So I suspect that's probably sufficient, but I understand your point and will certainly share it.
Okay, I'm not wedded to the idea. I'm just know some people don't always think things through.
Yeah. And, you know, perhaps as staff, we can do a better job of bringing that to the front for everybody more often as kind of a gentle reminder about the OPMA.
Okay. That might be, that might be a much preferable alternative.
Sure. We don't want to scare you off so much that you don't want to volunteer to serve in, of course, on the boards and commissions, so.
Absolutely.
Can I answer any other questions? Okay, like I said, please feel free to reach out to Beal Park, our city attorney. If you just have some hypothetical questions that he might be able to speak to, or you can email Ally. If you don't recall, you know, Ally's email, you can certainly reach out to Andrea and Andrea can forward it to Ally for you. Commissioner Perez, did it look like you were going to ask something or say something?
But I was just going to, if there's a way that we can get a summary of some of the issues that had happened in the past, just for general Commission member information. I mean, I think that could be.
Okay. I can, I know it's all public record and.
Give me some research.
But I can certainly, I can certainly ask that question. I imagine if we provide it to one board or commission, we'll provide it to everyone, so. And it might be one of those hypothetical things we discussed in the April training as well, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you for your patience in my kind of rapid discussion. Like I said, I'm jumping from one thing to the next, but I wish you all a good evening and thank you for your patience.
Thanks for joining us, Deb.
You're very welcome.
Okay, moving on. The third item of business is a review and decision for DSR 20-001, the Xinghua Mixed Use Building. Senior Planner Robin Propstein will provide a brief presentation of the project.
Thank you, Chair Irwin. I'm Robin Propstein, your senior planner. Tonight, the Design Commission is holding a public hearing on the design of a new mixed-use building in the Town Center Zone. This is a project that's come before the Design Commission previously. Twice, in fact, there were, there were two study sessions previously where the Design Commission offered feedback, so this will look familiar to some of you. I've prepared a presentation on the project's compliance with the applicable design code standards. And the applicant team who's present has also prepared a presentation describing the project. I'd like to let them speak first and introduce the project to you. So to do that, we have Megan McKay from Johnson Architects. And Megan, would you like to introduce your team and take the mic?
Yes. Hello. Hi. As Robin said, I'm Megan McKay. I'm a partner at Johnson Architects, and I'm also Mercer Island resident. I've lived here for the past 10 years, so it's very important to me that this project contribute positively to the Town Center. I'm here with my colleague Lou, who's done most of the production work on the project, so thank you, Lou, and also our wonderful landscape architecture team, Site Workshop. We have Clayton and Patrick joining us to explain some of the streetscape and public plaza elements of the project. So with that, I will share my screen. Everyone see the project up on the screen? Okay, so this is just kind of an introduction rendering of the southeast corner of our project. A quick overview of the project. This is on the Mud Bay and Tiger Garden property between 78th to the east, 77th to the west, and 29th to the south. The zoning is Town Center 4. It's got a 51-foot height limit. So our project is proposing four stories above two basement levels of parking, which accommodates both the retail and residential uses. It's proposing 159 residential units, of which 16 are affordable. About 14,000 square feet of retail and restaurants at the ground floor are proposed, that can accommodate three restaurants and six retail businesses. This project complies with all the zoning provisions in the Mercer Island Town Center Code. I just want to briefly touch on four shared goals between this project and the Town Center Code. The first is to enhance the pedestrian experience and sense of place in Town Center. So to this end, the building is oriented towards the sidewalk on all the frontages. Parking is underground to prioritize the pedestrian experience. The building incorporates modulation through both massing and material changes. Pedestrian mobility is improved with a new east-west-through-block connection at the north portion of the project site, just south of the McDonald's property. The second goal is to enhance Town Center with vibrant, healthy mix of uses. So all the retail proposed along the project is visible to the sidewalk and street. The corners here, here, and here are anchored with retail that's provisioned for a restaurant use. We're proposing some diverse plazas for public use distributing activity around the site. So each of the four plazas, two at the north, one mid-block along 78th, and a south plaza, each have different programs, which I'll get further into in a minute, so that provides a variety of social opportunities throughout the site. The third goal is to include public amenities consistent with the downtown street standards. So we've got storefronts with canopies, new street trees, lots of ground-level greenery, seating for public use, a water feature, outdoor cafe seating outside all three restaurants, art, and of course, the plazas for the, for gathering opportunity are all included in the project. And the architectural detailing incorporates human-scale elements, employed sloped roof lines, distinctive building shapes, art texture, pattern. And we've really focused on creating a positive and pedestrian ground-level experience. And lastly, to this end, we want to orient the project to pedestrians. So we've located retail at sidewalk street level to promote active use of sidewalks by pedestrians. Of course, the through-block connection will greatly enhance pedestrian mobility through Town Center, because we've got the long north-south blocks. And this project will support a range of transportation choices, walking, biking, and vehicles. All amenities for all three are included, but we've, of course, prioritized the pedestrian walking. So we've added lots of new public amenity spaces with this project. Again, through-block connection being one of the big ones, 20 feet wide across the north portion of the site. We've got a southeast corner plaza with sunny exposure, ample seating, and it has public art in a prominent location. Mid-block along 78th is a smaller plaza with a feature tree, and it coincides with major building modulation to break down the scale of this building. Each end of the through-block connection has also an enlarged plaza area with some different programs to anchor each end of the through-block and really invite the public to use this through-block connection. And as was mentioned, we've had two study sessions to date for this project, and so we're hopeful that this final design addresses some of the feedback we heard in that study session. The three main points were increasing human scale, which we've done through refined fenestration. We've reduced areas of blank wall, and we've clarified three distinct building masses with three distinct expressions, which I've shown here color-coded. And then the south building expression, the east building expression, and the north building expression. We've moderated the brick color to a midtown brick in response to feedback that our previous selection was too dark. And lastly, we've worked with the scale of this main south plaza space, which I want to remind everybody from the study sessions, we are constrained by the amount of setback we can provide from southeast 29th by some fire department access requirements, but we've tried to maximize the available space that we do have through some design moves, such as opening up the plaza with an enlarged curb bulb at the corner to really capture the sidewalk space into the plaza. We've simplified the design of this plaza to really maximize the sense of space. And from the building side, we've added some more human scale to the window patterning, patterning at the storefronts and the upper level. So kind of moving forward in greater detail on all these spaces, starting with the southeast plaza. This is the main entry to the project. The main entry lobby is here, so you enter here. And this is the most visible corner for the project. This plaza is activated by this adjacent retail space provisioned for a restaurant with spill-out space for seating, as well as, again, that primary residential entrance to the lobby. Amenities in this plaza include sunny exposure, benches and seats for public use, feature paving within the plaza, and public art indicated here at the corner in yellow in a really prominent location, as well as framed by feature trees at the corner in the streetscape. So from the building perspective, the primary material that you see is brick over a very transparent retail base. The area above the lobby, which you can kind of see behind the feature tree here, is a recessed area that's expressed as a connector between the two masses. So we've got a material change and a massing change there. The south and east buildings share a material palette. They're both brick with the dark windows to try to anchor this corner expression, but they differ slightly in their, in their massing expression. And again, moving with the midtown brick, because our previous selections, there was some comments that it was too dark. And throughout the project, we've incorporated wood-like soffit elements. I say wood-like, and I'm going to refer to it as wood in the presentation just for simplicity. It's not actual wood, but for durability, it's a Trespa product. So hopefully, it'll stay nice for a long time, but still add a warmth to all the soffit underside of balcony and underside of canopy elements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clayton to kind of get into the landscape features of the plaza.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Megan. So you did a very nice job of discussing the south plaza already, so I can be relatively brief. Key features here are, well, I'll start with the key challenge here. Megan already spoke to kind of our setback with the fire, but the other thing that's constraining us is the grading. So as we head east to west, we slowed down quite a bit. So that leaves us with kind of a purchase condition at the retail and lobby space, which also affords us some nice sort of bleacher, south-facing stepped seating. So we will have woodtop seats in that area, and on the upper portion will be a large flat plinth, another woodtop seating and gathering space just outside the lobby in the retail zone. And then finally, this is kind of late-breaking news that we just learned last night was at least informally approved by the Hartz Commission. Our intent is to relocate the recently damaged Fire Flower sculpture to this open corner here and nestle this sculpture in a planting bed. The sculpture itself is about seven feet in diameter and 11 feet tall, so it has a pretty prominent presence on a prominent corner. so it has a pretty prominent presence on a prominent corner.
Awesome. So moving north along 78th, this is the main retail frontage of the project. It's 100% retail storefronts, fronting 78th. The facade is brick with human scale elements. We've incorporated this unique sawtooth modulation that you can see here in plan, and you can see the results here in the massing. We've got overhead canopy coverage all along the storefronts and balconies above with the warm wood soffits below. And the sawtooth modulation also provides some roof level modulation to this facade. So the transparent retail base and all windows down here provides a dynamic edge against the sidewalk that gives us an opportunity for additional landscape between the sidewalk and the building along the sidewalk, which is kind of a unique feature. And mid-block, about two-thirds of the way north, there's major modulation of the building, again, expressed with a material change that creates a small plaza with a feature tree and feature paving. It's aligned with a curb bulb to sort of express that plaza and maximize the sense of space. This plaza is activated with retail entries to this retail space and this retail space, as well as the entry and exit from the retail parking, which comes out here. So lots of through traffic in this plaza to activate it. So I'll turn it back over to Clayton to talk a little more about the landscaping.
So note, the site plan in the upper left has rotated north to the left. And one, so a couple of additional important points here to note are the realignment of the parking spaces along 78th. So that curb gets reworked to provide additional parking and the streetscape trees and lighting as required by the Town Center code along 78th. It's, let's see, so we have deep planting pockets through a property easement on the property. So we end up with two to five feet deep planting along that curb side. And I think it's also important to note that the, all of the streetscape trees and particularly the large feature tree in the middle are connected via their, for their soil volume is connected. So these trees ought to do quite a bit better than the trees that are currently there along 78th, because they will have quite a bit more soil to work with that is uncompacted and full of air and water. And I think we'll talk more about the seating on some other plazas, but some interesting seating objects as well will show up along the 78th streetscape.
All right, arriving at the northeast corner of the project, this is the east entry to that through block connection along the north side of the building. So we've got a, north is now rotated, so it's down on the page. So McDonald's is here, our project is here, this is 78th, and this is the through block. So this northeast plaza widens the opening to that through block connection to make this through block connection as inviting as possible for the public, which was a really important element discussed in the study session, how we can really encourage people to walk through this amenity. This space is activated by an adjacent retail space provisioned for a restaurant, as well as a secondary entry to the residential lobby off the through block connection. So amenities in this plaza include overhead lighting, feature tree, sculptural stone seats, accent paving, and space for outdoor seating outside this cafe.
You said it all?
I know.
That's okay, one thing, one thing that's worth noting, just when we say feature tree, what we mean by that is it's a special tree because of its species and the splash of color that it will have seasonally, but also that it's going to go in big. So we are sourcing relatively large trees that are quite valuable. And so they will, we will have a more immediate presence with these trees than we might otherwise have.
Great. Keep rolling, Clayton.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so now we switch, we transition to the through block. So as Megan mentioned, the through block is 20 feet wide. That includes an eight-foot-wide walkway surface and then the landscaping in between. One of the things that, and I think Megan will speak to this a little bit later, but the study session, the last study session we worked through suggested more activation along the through block by providing access to those residential units along the through block. So we recrafted this space to provide some floating-type staircases over the landscape and connect up to the paving features along the walkway. Thank you. These, conceptually, like our high-level concept for this space was that this was somewhat like a dock. And so the idea is that the walkway is sort of floating over the landscape. There are two, at least in pieces of it, there are two kind of swales, stormwater features on either side of it, so it kind of floats over the landscape. And our materiality will attempt to give that feeling as well with precast concrete pavers, narrow paving, scoring and pavers. Yeah, I think that's good there. So here, we start to get a little bit closer to the northwest plaza, a couple of sections showing the grade change between the, so the section B on the left is where we start to, actually, yeah, it's on the right. So you can see the grade separation between the residential and the through block and the stair beyond. And that section starts to show how that through block paving is elevated above the landscape just a little bit, as if it's floating. And then the section on the left, A, you'll see that we're more flush with the grade of the building there. I maybe should have started by acknowledging that similar to 29th to the south, the through block is sloping from east to west. So it's going down toward your right on the screen. There are some of those detailed images that we referenced.
Took it a minute.
And now the northeast, or northwest plaza, so again, well, this is for you, Megan.
It's fine.
Retail.
Wanted to try to intertwine the landscape architecture, so it's kind of interchangeable. So this is west entry to the through block connection. Again, this widens as it reaches the street to be more inviting to the public. Again, we've got a restaurant space right next to it, which will have some covered outdoor area for seating to really activate this guy. Amenities, which I'll let Clayton roll through.
So I really, I think, Megan, you've mentioned this a couple of times. I'll just reiterate that, the fact that there are these two open plazas on the corners of the through block, I think, are going to be really effective and genuine attempts to bring people into the site and to activate that through block. I think they'll be fairly effective. Our intent with this plaza here is to have it be a little bit more of a sort of park-like space. So the idea is that there would be fixed picnic tables along the northern edge there near the hand and bike racks and a bike fix-it station and potentially even a water bottle filler. So this would be sort of a little mini parklet-like space that does also happen to be connected to the retail, where there might be tables and chairs underneath the canopy. And the plaza is punctuated by a large playful sort of character boulder right there at the kind of sidewalk edge. When there's, I should also add, there's a trench drain connecting the stormwater feature between the building and the through block and the boulder stone.
Yeah, that'll serve as a really nice kind of natural delineation between where, you know, you could see some restaurant outdoor seating on the south part. And that's kind of just drawing upon that expression of the stormwater, you know, moving downhill along the through block in a nice way. So we've arrived at 77th Avenue, this is a cross from Met Market, ground floor retail facing the street. With, we've added a more human scale, Moline pattern, and warm wood accents to the retail level. And we've have this overhead canopy that wraps the corner into this northwest plaza. And that canopy really helps to reduce, this is a, you know, fairly tall retail space. It'll be a really nice retail space, but this canopy helps reduce the vertical scale for people walking along the sidewalk. This is, this north building has a simple massing form that's punctuated by these contrasting dark windows and the warm wood balcony accents along 77th and mid-block along the through block connection.
So the streetscape on 77th is simpler than on 78th. We are intending to reuse existing tree grades. And right now, they're in, generally, in, at least on 78th, they're only half. And so we're going to pair two of them together around these existing trees. And I should note that all of the street trees around the perimeter of the project have been vetted with the Urban Forester, Mercer Island's Urban Forester. So these are recommended species for kind of the bigger picture of the town center. This zone also does include on the bottom of the plan view that this is kind of the service access to the project.
Yep, loading area as well as trash and recycling pickup happen off of 77th. And there's space for trucks to pull off the street so they don't cause any traffic issues along 77th.
Exterior materials, so we talked a little bit about seat steps and plinths and wood-topped furnishings over generally concrete bases, fixed picnic tables, park-like tables, bike racks, steel planters. And concrete will be a combination of precast concrete pavers and sort of typical scored concrete, sometimes saw cut joints, sometimes tool. And then a variety of street trees, as mentioned, coordinated with the arborist or urban forester. And all, you know, with seasonal color, like the magnolia is one of the feature trees. And so that has a very vibrant early flower, et cetera.
Great. Slides loading, but next we'll talk about architectural materials. Predominant expression is this mid-tone brick. We went out on site to select this exact color. We were, this is actually a pretty good match for what's on the ground plane outside the McDonald's in the, on the ground plane in the entry plaza for McDonald's. So those will kind of tie in that way with the existing neighbor. We've also proposing corrugated metal and a kind of a dark gray charcoal color. The white facing 77th is a standing seam metal, so hopefully, that'll help keep its bright color for a long time. The wood is again a Trespa high-pressure laminate panel with a wood-like appearance. We've also got facing into the courtyard and the center part of the through block connection, some white cement panel. All the windows, storefronts, and the windows above in the residential units are planned to be black, as well as all the railing elements. So all the metalwork will be that black color, which is a nice contrast with the other materials around the parking garage entry, or proposing an artistic perforated metal just around the entrance. This is kind of a image from a different project showing graduated hole pattern that will create custom for the project based on an inspiration image, kind of a landscape, organic view, mountainscape with lake in the front. So it'll be abstracted. Moving into the exact architectural elevations, this is the south elevation. So this portion between the two red lines is actually fronting the street. And this is set beyond not directly fronting the street. So this south building is predominantly brick. It has inset balconies at the upper floors, has some charcoal metal accents. The perforated metal is at the garage entry, separated from the east building by an inset lobby, which is the white standing seam metal on setback. The east building is that sawtooth expression, again, predominantly brick over a transparent base, sawtooth and plan, which also modulates the roof line along 78th. The mid-block plaza is the major modulation along 78th. Again, that connector is inset with the white metal siding. Turning the corner, this is the north elevation facing the through block connection. You see the north end of that east building with its sloping roof. The center section of the mid-block is the white cement panel, and it has some projecting balconies with the wood detailing on them. And the part of the north building, that front 77th, has the white standing seam metal and lots of wood detailing at the soffits, canopy, and at the retail base. And then lastly, turning the corner, west elevation, 77th. This is between these two lines, this is the portion that actually fronts the street across from Met Market, that white standing seam, inset balconies, wood base. And this is the part of the building that's set back beyond, or carves around the church property at the corner. And then in closing, just wanted to touch on the plans to get everyone organized with the project. There's one and a half basement levels of parking. The vehicle entry is here at the south corner along 29th. You enter here and the top levels, commercial and shared flex parking. So that's all the retail parking. And then down on the lower level is exclusive residential parking. At level one, which is the ground plane, we've got retail pretty much completely fronting the streetscape. The yellow spaces here at the corners are the restaurants, and the orange spaces are the six retailers, kind of mid-block. The blue area is the residential lobby entry that stretches from north to south with entry both on the through block connection and the southeast plaza. And then the rest of the building is apartment units arranged around a central residential amenity courtyard. You can see that above, the courtyards here in the center, residential units all around. So that concludes our presentation. Yes, I'll turn it over to Robin now.
Thank you, Megan, appreciate that. If there are questions you'd like to ask right now, missionaries, you're welcome to do so. Alternately, you could wait to the end and ask all of us any questions you might have. Do you have a preference, Chair?
I do not.
Not hearing any burning questions, I'll just dive on in. But if any do come up, please don't hesitate to ask them. So I will, oh, Commissioner Grandboy?
Hi, Megan, is the leasing office going to be in that long lobby area? Or where do you propose that's going to be located?
The leasing office here. Fast forward to the sheet and then share my screening in. The leasing office is here. Like the actual leasing agent would sit here right at the entry to greet people coming in to the space. And this is an amenity room for residents, and this is a fitness room here. As well as, this is a large seating area in the lobby that we're hoping people will utilize as a social space as well.
Will the lobby be open to the public or just the residents?
Um, I don't know that that's been determined yet, so I don't want to necessarily say. But since the leasing agent will be staffing it, I imagine it. I don't know, I don't want to say anything that's not correct. I don't think. I don't think that's been determined for sure yet, though.
Thank you.
I guess to follow up on that, where where are the locations where the where the public parking accesses the street?
The public parking, so the vehicles drive.
Sorry, once, once you've gotten out of your car.
Yeah, so it's here. There's elevator and stairs down to the parking and the exit door is here. So you enter and exit through this mid block plaza.
Okay, so that whole upper level of parking is either shared or, you know, kind of commercial public parking. But everybody has to funnel to that one. Location on the east side. To get.
Yes, so here, let me go up a slide here. So yeah, you enter here and this is kind of, there's a. Complicated parking plan, so I'm speaking generally here, but this is kind of the main. Commercial only parking and then this is more flex shared parking. And yeah, they, there's kind of two. I guess one entry here, but you can easily walk through the two parts of the garage.
And then the the vertical stack over there at the west side, that is just to get residents from the lower parking garage up to the units?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you, yeah, yes.
So that, so there aren't any stairs from the parking garage to the lobby?
There are here.
Okay, but those aren't for the public.
Not intended to be for the public, no.
Okay, so the lobby is probably not.
I mean, you could walk in through the front door. But yeah, I imagine it was mostly for residents, but I don't want to like speak for the management staff. That hasn't been specifically discussed to my knowledge, so don't have enough information to. Go on the record to answer that.
Okay, and then sorry, just real quick on the floor up where you're delineating parking or a restaurant and retail. Is the peach colored one to the west there, is that retail?
Yes, sorry. When I exported the colors, yeah, this is all meant to be retail, 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 retail. General retail spaces and then the three yellow shaded ones have, you know, vent hoods. Incorporated, so they can handle a restaurant kitchen.
Okay, that's that's helpful. One of the, one of the questions I had for you guys is, you know, relates directly to one of the, a couple of the public comments that we've gotten. And are specific to the the flexibility among these spaces to modulate between restaurant and retail. And I guess what I'm hearing is you're saying that the three corner units that are stated to be restaurant will have ventilation.
Yes.
Available, but the rest will not. That's, that's, that's your definition basically of retail versus restaurant.
Correct, yeah, so I mean, if you didn't need ventilation, you had like. Coffee shop when you got pastries shipped in or something, you could occupy the other spaces, I guess. But yeah, the corner spaces have the ventilation and the. Code provision setup for the restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I dive into a discussion of the code? Hearing and seeing none, I'll dive on in. Bear with me here as I share my screen. Okay, can everyone now see my presentation?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay, did it right this time. So I have just a very brief presentation on the project's compliance with the applicable code standards. Starting first with a little bit of background and context. So first, the application is for design review approval of a new mixed use building at 2885 78th Avenue Southeast and 2750. 77th Avenue Southeast. These two properties are within the town center zone, meaning that the design standards in chapter 1911 of the Mercer Island City Code apply. The properties are currently each developed with a one story commercial buildings and surface parking. The building to the west was built in 1994. The building to the east was built in 1962. And the applicant is proposing to build a new four story mixed use building with two stories of structured parking underneath. Here's a rendering of the proposed building from roughly the vantage point of the top left image up here. So if we're looking at the Tiger Garden sign, here's the the southeast corner. I have a brief discussion of the product compliance with the code. My role as I see it is to support you, the design commissioners, in applying the city's code. So the staff report lays out applicable code standards and refers to the application materials to document compliance. So certainly if you see things differently or understand the code to apply differently, that's your prerogative. I'm just here to support you. I'll spare you from reading my entire staff report. I will just hit some highlights here, starting with the major site feature requirement of the code. And so any building that. Pardon me. Is going over the two story base height and which includes or abuts a preferred through block connection as shown in the slide here. So in this case, the hatchmark area in that red circle is one of the referred through block connection locations shown in the code. And a property that includes or abuts, it needs to include a through block connection. Through block connections need to connect the right of way, which this proposed design does. It connects 77th Avenue Southeast and 78th Avenue Southeast. Connections are required by code to be minimum of 20 feet wide, which the proposed design is. And it should include a. Special decorative paving and incorporate design features like landscaping and lighting, which this design does. Here you have the rendering showing the landscaping, the overhead catenary lighting consistent with code. And lastly, at least 50% of the ground level building frontage should be designed and constructed to provide occupancy by active residential or non residential uses. And here the building is designed to have commercial spaces on either corner and then active residential. Townhomes in in the middle. So here's the rendering showing, here's the the restaurant spaces on either side and then the residential spaces in the middle. Regarding building materials, color and modulation, the code speaks to the use of durable, high quality materials. Used with cohesive, cohesiveness and compatibility on all sides of the building. And using a harmonious range of colors that generally avoid bright colors. And here is the applicant showed in their material board. There's proposed use of metal and high pressure laminate that resembles wood. As well as cement and brick, all of which are durable, high quality and avoid bright colors. The project mixes up the use of materials that the building doesn't look like one uniform monolith. Yet keeps a consistent and harmonious material palette so that the different sections of the building still harmonize. So for example, here's the west side facing Met Market and through block connection. The corner building uses the. The black metal, the wood laminate and the white composite to look like one building. Whereas on the east side and the north, they bring in the use of the brick. So there's common elements, but they're kind of remixed so that the different. Portions of the building look distinct while still being harmonious together. Buildings are also required to be modulated both on a vertical axis and on a horizontal axis. And here, the 3D view shows how the upper floors are distinguished from the street level retail. With a clear horizontal modulation as required by code. There's also vertical modulation provided in the form of the sawtooth pattern on the east facade. And modulation in facade depth on the south and west. Landscaping is required by code to be equal to an area equal to 25% of the development site. And here the code provides some options for achieving this total. For example, certain kinds of landscaping are counted differently. For example, areas supporting trees that will exceed 30 feet at maturity are counted at 200% of the area. And planting areas that will support trees that will exceed 15 feet in height at maturity are counted at 100, at 150%. So landscape design proposes a mix of planting beds that wrap around the building. There are large trees, medium trees, and also a green roof. Which altogether exceed the minimum required landscaping established by code. And that is all I had prepared. Based on the review of the proposed design alongside the design criteria, staff are recommending that the design commission approve the project with the conditions listed in the staff report. I will leave it to you to deliberate and or ask any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any specific questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zara have a. A quick question, there is reference to commentary during study sessions related to the brick color. And maybe some of the other exterior finishes. And revisions made accordingly. I don't necessarily remember. Some of those comments and I'm just wondering, is there, is there a way to get a refresher or? Are there, are there notes that could be referenced? In particularly related to exterior materials?
So I, I don't believe there's a a record of the content of previous study sessions kept. Maybe minutes just capture actions by the commission. So I guess I rely on if unfortunately not having been present, but if you have notes from that or if you recall. To tease out for the the substance of the meeting.
Was it, was it actually, was it a comment by a commissioner or was it a comment by? By input outside of the commission? Do we know?
It was a comment by a commissioner. I apologize, I don't remember by whom, but the materials were discussed in depth. We kind of came to the original study session with a really, not really, really dark, but you know, fairly dark charcoal brick. As well as a lighter brick and I. We were actually playing with possibly having. Health building and the east building have different brick. And it was just a comment that was kind of like too far. To the extreme of dark in particular, I think the negative reaction was to the dark charcoal brick. So we kind of.
But Suzanne, to your question, I don't believe that the the concerns about that were uniform across all of the design commission members. I think there are, there are a number that did have a concern and others that were weren't so worried about it or even even liked it.
Thank you, that's how I recall it as well and. We, I could save my comments around that maybe until we have a chance to deliberate.
Robin, I have a couple of questions for you. And there, there, there are two really, there's, there's one, I know there's a lot of discussion that I'd like to sort of remind everybody about. Regarding the the trees and the parking along 78th. And the removal of the of the mature trees that are there and the changing of the 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 pocket parking and that sort of thing. And my memory is that, is that Patrick, the, you know, the the senior city engineer was at the meeting and and walked us through. A number of those changes and and described to us that the many of those changes were actually bringing the that section of the the parking. Closer to alignment with the with the long term city plan for that stretch of of 78th. Is that correct? And I just, I want to make sure that my memory is is accurate. Because again, the public comments, there are a lot of concerns about the mature trees coming down and things like that. And I want to make sure people are really clear, including the commission. About what the intention is there long term and and making sure that what's happening and being proposed is going to support that.
So I'm not happy, I wasn't, I didn't hear Patrick's presentation firsthand, but that jives with the the code standard is, which is. Town center code prescribes what the alignment or the the lane configuration of both 77th Avenue Southeast. And 78th Avenue Southeast should be. And this design does, it follows this prescribed standard here. So this includes sidewalk. Either street trees or parking pockets and then the two travelings separated by a median. So this, this is what is proposed on the 78th Avenue side of the building. Does that answer any question?
It it does, I I think it's an important thing for people to 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 see and and understand and remember. And maybe the applicants can just remind me whether the number of parking spots in that parking pocket are or those parking pockets is staying the same or increasing. Or decreasing.
Maybe.
They're staying the same.
My screen, I have the original diagram.
Absolutely, I'll stop sharing.
Can you guys see?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yes, so this is the original, the current space curve and this is what we propose. So you can see. Like the pocket was here. And we voted to like incorporate our two block designs, so we actually moved that to have this enlarged plaza. But that's, that's the major niche and this is the. So we, yeah, there, right now there are four car parking spaces and we are able to keep the same number.
Got it, okay, thank you, yeah, so it's a net wash, right, it's four, four versus four. And the only thing that's changing is the location, so if you're, if you're concerned about the symmetry of that pocket versus the one on the other side of 78th. That's no longer there, everything's shifting just a little bit, but that's technically speaking and from a. Public perception speaking, it's, that's the, that's the net change there.
Well, I'll, I'll add one thing as the current configuration of the trees in relation to the curb. Is inconsistent with the, with the code that Robin shared. It's actually on the property side of the sidewalk right now.
That's right. Yeah, and everything's moving out to where they belong, you know, came between those pockets, yeah, okay, thank you. And then Robin, could you also help me sort of understand, there's a discussion in your summary about what's happening. On the west side of the building and the treatment of the sidewalk and the future plans for 77th. And and what's not being done and what, how all that's going to work so that it is done properly when 77th does get modified?
Yes, absolutely, so 77th is another specific street in the code that's called out as needing to be a specific configuration. The existing condition adjacent to this building does not match what is shown in the code. So on the recommendation of the city engineer, instead of. Repaving, rebuilding, basically the section of street just adjacent to the building and creating a condition where. To the north and south, there are different lane configurations than this code standard. Is met only adjacent to the building, so where people have to, you know, shift back and forth between lanes. Since a. Capital project to redo all of 77th Avenue Southeast to match this code is proposed on our capital improvement plan anyway. The city engineer recommends that the applicant contribute toward that future project. So we're paying a proportionate share to improve the street in front of the building. But to pay a fee and do rather than do the construction themselves to avoid that scenario where we have. You know, lane configurations switching back and forth instead having it all done in one, one fell swoop.
Okay, okay, that helps, yeah, and when you say north and south of the property, you mean obviously north of the property, you know, at McDonald's. And south is just that, just be that corner lot, right? Basis 77th.
Yeah, on 77th Avenue.
Okay.
Or we don't.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to that point, there, there's exhibit nine in your packet. I don't know item number, but it's the, it's the memorandum from Patrick Yamashita. That's who you're referring to, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and I, for some reason, couldn't get past the first page on that, so I need some clarification, so thank you. Yeah. And I, for some reason couldn't get past the first page on that. So I need some clarification. So thank you.
Would anything else be helpful initially or, yes, Commissioner Gando?
I, I saw two different heights listed in the packet. Is it fifty one feet or fifty four feet?
I think what is measuring the top of the building, one is including the appurtenances that are allowed. There's certain types of appurtenances are allowed to go above the height limit to a certain extent. And so the building itself meets the height limit. But the appurtenances, they are also within that allowance for just appurtenances.
And then on the green roof, will people be allowed on the roof?
No. See, no.
Okay. And, and I apologize. I haven't seen this before in a design meeting. In our packet, there was a letter from the preservation officer. Do we as a commission, do we address that or is it just there for?
I, so it is, it was that comment from the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation was provided as part of the SEPA review, which occurred concurrently with the design review. So SEPA review is required for basically any new development. And it is a sort of check for any environmental impacts that are not caught by code. The city's code does not specifically address historic preservation in this, for this type of scenario. So the department wrote us a letter and let us know there's a high likelihood that there could be historic resources here. Please ensure that a plan is in place in case something is found. And so that was, that's been added as a SEPA mitigation item.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more for the applicant, just looking at the site plan and the three block connection. I think Robin, in your diagram, you called out where that twenty foot width is, I guess what I was seeing is that on the north side of that, there is a band of planting that's included in the, in the planting plan and that's sort of the site diagram that we just looked at, but that is actually on the neighboring property if I, if I have that right. And I just wanted to double check.
Graphic here to help. So.
Another way of asking the question is, is the north end of, well, maybe that's not the right way to ask the question. Maybe we could pull it up and see.
I think in Robin's visual, the like twenty foot graphic with the little dimension arrows was like slightly off.
Okay, that's, I, I wanted to confirm that.
It actually, it looks like there's a little, it's a little generous here. There's three feet and change shown in this little dimension here, which is mainly landscaping and then a full twenty feet. Okay, no.
Would you display that please? Sorry. Thank you.
I wonder if there's a clearer graphic. Oh, I'm so sorry. Spent too much time on teams.
I'm certain it looks great to you, but the rest of us have to see it too.
You know, you get used to one system and then you have to go into a public meeting that uses a different program. So forgive me. The, in the graphic, I just took a snip from the applicant's landscape plan here. There's three feet of or a three foot dimension shown here from the property line, which is mostly landscaping. Then next twenty full feet of through block connection. So I think there's actually, it's at least twenty feet. I've seen the, the dash line here is the property line.
Okay, that's, that was my question, my concern. It sounds like the, the north end of that planting that you guys are proposing is at the property line. It's all included. Okay, great. I just, the, the dimension string over there just threw me off a little bit. So.
There are some large trees at the south border of the McDonald's property, but that's so it'll appear wider, but all the dark green you can see on the screen is on our property.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. That helps.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a couple of questions and I think this probably leads into maybe what, what Suzanne, Suzanne was going to be talking about. This is for you, Megan. And I, while you were talking and presenting on the materials, I went through and I was looking at the, at the, at the local area regarding the red brick. So can you just, why did you select that brick? You know, was, was it the immediate adjacency of McDonald's or was there, was there deeper contemplation associated with that? And then, you know, the other question regarding the HPL, is that a Trespa-type product, you know, and, and how do you feel about taking that all the way down to the concrete? I mean, these are, these are detailed questions, but I think that I just want to understand more deeply the, the brick from your point of view, the color selection, and then just detailing associated with the HPL. You know, we'll talk about this as a group, I think internally too.
Right. So following our study session and the like, I guess, non-uniform, but still feedback from the board that our brick was dark, we kind of retooled and we're like, okay, we need to think in the mid-range. We didn't want to go super orange-red with the brick. We still wanted something kind of neutral colored. So we wanted to be in the mid-range brown tones. And so we brought, we got a bunch of samples from mutual materials, you know, a local brick supplier went out to the site one day, three of us, and walked around and just looked at the samples in, in real life in the environment. And the McDonald's Plaza had kind of almost precisely what we were looking for, that mid-tone brown. So we still feel the, the brown is, is modern, can be modern. It's not the like red-orange. So we were like, oh, this is really working. And it brings in some of the neighbors. And we walked around and, you know, Matt Market has the like black and white and charcoal expression that just went in with their remodel. So it was really kind of working with the site neighbors. We did want to avoid being too monotone. I guess that's some of my criticism of a couple of the buildings around town. They like stay just in the middle range and don't get too contrasty. And that's kind of why we wanted to incorporate some of the black and the charcoal and the white to play off the brick. And the Trespa, yeah, we are thinking of a Trespa product. We, we love wood. As a firm, I love to incorporate it in all the projects we possibly can. But recognizing that for a commercial project, wood isn't, doesn't necessarily hold up fifteen, twenty years down the line. So that's why we kind of veered toward a synthetic product. And we will be detailing that on a rain screen. So hopefully it'll hold up over time.
Would you mind pulling up the material board image just as you're kind of describing it or finish describing it just for reference?
Here are a minute to think about moving slides. Yeah. So yeah, we took these actual material samples around the immediate block radius and kind of held it up next to some of the neighboring buildings. And we felt this was harmonious, like not an exact duplicate, but it fit within its neighbors.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? Okay, I will go to three. Do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions? Thank you for your time, Robin.
I think I saw a hand.
Okay, go ahead. You're muted.
Hi, could you, I'm sorry, I was raising my hand and then I was pressing the raise hand button on the computer. And could you walk me through how you determined parking?
Absolutely. Oh, pardon for, but from a code perspective, or it just is.
Yes, perfect.
I'll dive on in if that's all right. Let me see, I have some information and I will properly share my screen this time. Can everyone see the slide here?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Good, good. And so parking is like traffic, it's based on land use. So here we have retail, restaurant and residential uses. Each category of land use has a parking standard, meaning there's a minimum number of spaces required for retail, minimum number for restaurant, et cetera. And the applicant has provided enough spaces in the parking garage to meet the required parking for each use. Now, there is a provision in the city's code that allows for a reduction of the total of all of the minimum parking for each use. African can document that a reduced number is sufficient to meet the demand for that site. So for example, think of like an office space and residential building. It's sometimes you'll see projects where there's an overall reduction because, you know, residents leave during the day and office workers come to take those spaces during the day. So there is a, an option to do that. It's called a shared parking provision. The applicant for this project is not proposing to do that. They're providing a full amount of parking for each use. So I, I think there may have been some confusion where the applicant is providing what are called flex spaces. That simply means that those are spaces that are available to all users. So resident or, you know, someone shopping or dining at a restaurant. Instead of having like separate little fiefdoms for parking, like these are just the retail, these are just the restaurant. They're just designating spaces that are available for anyone to use. And did I answer your question?
More or less. Thank you.
All right. Once again, are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Thank you, Robin. Okay, fellow commissioners, let's have a talk.
I'll kind of go first, you know, maybe.
Please.
Suzanne. So, so first off to the, to the applicants, you know, obviously they've been listening carefully and I think that the I think a very fine job in terms of pulling together a lot of the commentary and obviously have a lot of care and and focus on doing what is the right thing here. Again, my, my commentary is, is primarily around materials at this particular point. As I said before, I did have a chance to kind of go through, I did a virtual tour as you were presenting. And at first was struggling with, with the, with the red and orange brick. I do see it's used in a number of buildings in the immediate vicinity. It's used on the northern end for apartment buildings, both in detail and otherwise. And it's used in the community center here on the island. My fear, and I'll go ahead and state this in front of the commission, my fear is that in a, in a building where it will be one of the most prominent buildings in, in downtown Mercer Island is that this will set a precedent for, for its material use as the de facto standard moving forward. So it's, it's, it's just a concern, but I, I must say, you know, looking through and getting, doing a virtual tour, three blocks north and three blocks south and looking at brick representation, there was a lot more brick than I remembered. So so it's a comment. If anybody else has some more comments on the commission, I'd like to hear additional points of view. It, it's the one item that surprised me in the, in the cemental. The Trespa, to me, I think it's, it's a really handsome material. I think it's the right tone. Works really well with the white. I think warms up the, the palette a lot. For me, it's just, it's, it's detailing. It's detailing for durability. I think the only, only other question would be whether or not from a, I think an item that we could talk about as a group would be whether or not this is a durable quality material. I believe that it is leaning that way. Although I'd say that it's a little closer to the edge than, than some other materials potentially. I just want to make sure that it's detailed for long-lasting longevity. In particular, as it meets the, the grade.
I could, I could go next and then we could maybe
Sure.
Talk about it collectively. I, I really appreciate the attention to the through block connection, landscape, hardscape, pedestrian scale in general, front-facing retail, overall massing. I, I think from the previous studies, they've only improved. But I, I have to echo Commissioner Perez's comments regarding the materiality and not just the chosen materials, but in some cases, the, the breadth and width of potentially a singular material. I, 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 I don't have the previous study that was presented in front of me. I wish I did because for some reason I, I recall like mutuals Coal Creek brick, you know, as part of the presentation. And there was something more rounded and residential about it in my memory. It, the scale of the building feels with the applied materials currently feels more institutional for some reason. It doesn't feel as garden, residential. The, the texture and I, 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 I think it felt more residential scales, the best way I could put it. There's, there's a breadth and width of some of the white cladding that feels a little too commercial or institutional. And so I, I also was a little I think there's opportunities, I would say. I, I appreciate the intention of seeing what else contextually is on site. But I, I do think that what you're matching up with is residential, but there's also a lot of it that goes non-residential, commercial. And so I, I, I don't, I know that there needs to be an integration, but to me that means really celebrating some of that natural materiality and having it be proportioned and scaled in a way that really enhances the building, but I don't think it's quite, quite there yet. And I, and I say this not because maybe I have a, a personal architectural preference to other materials because I tend to really like the Coal Creek or, or, you know, but it just this, the proportionality and application of the materials. Maybe we could speak a little bit more about it as a commission and as a, a design team. But I, I, I really appreciate all the development that happened in the through block and the corners. It, it's going to be, I think, a well-received project for the, the town center at a pedestrian scale. So I, I just want to congratulate the team in general for carrying that thread through based on previous study sessions. So like Commissioner Perez, I would say my, my hangup has more to do with the materiality. I see, I see, I just want to say, I see losing has potentially a response or a comment.
Yeah, I just.
Right. That's what I was about to say.
Yeah, the email from a public and they want to need to show the previous render. Yeah, I just received the email from a public and they want to need to show the previous renderings. So I, I don't know, am I allowed to show that? There's a comparison.
Oh, if you have them, I'd love to see them personally, yes, if no one objects.
Yes, yeah.
I was trying to find them, yeah, thank you for showing that.
So this is how dark it was.
And that was the Coal Creek for mutual materials.
Yeah, I think personally, it, it just, it feel, the, the extent of white stands out more, it sticks its chest out more when you have the pure white, if this feels more natural, more integrated into, it feels more grounded. So. And, and in some ways more, more residential to me than potentially how the previous, the current rendering is, is presenting itself, but I, I open that up for kind of conversation.
I have a question for Ms. Zhang as well, with respect to the color of white, most specifically with respect to page A as an apple 308, is it white, white, is it cream white, what kind of white are we talking about?
I forget what it's exactly called. Pretty white.
Can you repeat that again, please, Megan?
Um, we're trying to find the exact name of the white. It's fairly, fairly white, it's like slightly cream, but pretty white. In order to make Zoom work more favorably, we both disconnected from our server. So it's taking a little bit longer to locate the color name.
While you're addressing that, are there any other questions from the commissioners?
I don't necessarily have questions, I have some, some comments, you know, I was, I was one of the, of the group that was in favor of the darker, the darker brick the last time around. We did get a lot of public comment about that. That was a huge concern, I think the, the design team heard that from the community, we heard that from the community and I think there was, as, as much as some of us on the commission, I think maybe liked it and appreciated it. I think the move to this was, was a cautionary one. You know, relative to the feedback they were getting across the broader community and not just from us. So I'll, I'll, I'll put that out there as I think one of the reasons they took away, you know, what, what they did from our, from our last meeting and have moved in this direction. Again, I like, I liked the darker brick before, I liked the, you know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but, you know, I think at the, at the end of the day, as a, as a commission, what we're going to have to do is decide whether what's in front of us is going to pass or not, right? And if not, you know, then we send it back to the drawing board about whatever item we think, we feel it is that we need to send them back for. So I, I think as we talk about materials, we talk about that kind of thing, we have to recognize that, you know, we, we can't approve this project with the darker brick, right? Because the drawings don't include it, it has to be a, you know, kind of a new meeting and a new cemental. So, you know, I want to put that out there, both for us and for the, for the applicants. You know, they may say, we really want the dark brick and if they get the thumbs up from us and come back in a month with just that and everything else has been approved, that's, that's one way to go, right? But it's, again, just important for us to remember the implications of, of where this conversation could, could take us. I, I've got a couple of, one other comment I guess I've got and I, and I, I think one of the things that I've heard a lot from the community and I think about a fair amount as well as sort of this, you know, the amount of green space that's required on, on buildings like this. And there's always been a push among the community members to have access to as much of the, the green space on a project as, as possible and, and in buildings like this that have a central courtyard with green space, we have heard from our community forever that wanting to have access to that space as the public is always desirable. And I, 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 I say that just to remind people that as you start to think about the amount of green space that's required for a project, the couple of things come into play, what is that desire, right? The public wants to have as much access to it as they can and I get that. You want to keep the building as green and visibly kind of, you know, kind of organic, if you will, as, as possible from sort of all sides, but the other reason for green space is to help deal with stormwater, right? I mean, that's, there's, there's two components to it and so things like green roofs, even though no one's ever going to see it unless you've got a drone or you're flying by, you know, in a low aircraft, you know, it, it, it does serve value even though it's not accessible necessarily to the public. And I think, you know, there's, there's, so there is, there is benefit there. I, I don't think that, you know, given the security that you have in a residential structure like this, providing access to a central courtyard to the public is a good idea. I understand the resistance that we see across the board in every application that we've gotten for projects like this, it's just, I think that, that's, that's just setting the whole community up for, including the police department, you know, up for, up for problems. So I say that because I think again, those, you know, that, that, the amount of public, the access to public space is something the community thinks about a lot and I just sort of want to go on the record of talking, letting people, you guys and everybody know sort of what, what those trade-offs are and sort of my feelings about it. What else? One concern I've gotten, this is directed maybe to Clayton, just thinking about the, the 20-foot through block connection and the, and the eight feet that's left over for, you know, walking space, right? It's a, it's a straight shot, it's set up to be sort of bike friendly, there's a bike, you know, kind of repair stand maybe at one end and that kind of thing. What are your thoughts about the width of that, knowing that there might be, you know, a couple of people walking side by side and a bike or two kind of zipping through there every once in a while?
Yeah, I can certainly appreciate that concern, I think the challenge for us has to do with the, the grading between the McDonald's parking lot and the through block coming down at 5%. So we could certainly push it out in some zones, but then as the two sort of separate, we end up with some steeper slopes and some existing trees that we have to keep, so, that are on the other property. So expanding the concrete, that direction makes it pretty challenging and we can't go the other direction toward the building because of, again, the grade separation between the units. So the stairs become a constraint for us there. So it's pretty tight, it's a pretty tight fit in there largely because of the grading and the existing trees.
Okay, because what you're saying is that from the edge of the, of the eight-foot walkway, you've got to get up quite steeply, either to the property land on the one side or, or, okay, okay. Yeah, I, I, I love it as a pedestrian thoroughfare, I love all the, the landscape on either side, I think it's, I think it's beautiful. I think you guys have done a nice job of it, it's, that's, that's just the one concern as I think about, you know, kids coming, you know, from the, or heading towards the skate park and zipping down there or, or somebody on a bike and some people walking through.
Yeah, I think it's fair and we'll look at it again, it's been a long time since that dimension was set, but we can look at it again just to make sure there's not a way to squeeze a little more room out of that and certainly, you know, just being aware of that to make sure that any of the details are not dangerous, you know, with respect to people on bikes traveling along there.
Yeah, I appreciate that each end, the throat isn't sort of thrown wide open people could just kind of flood in there, you've got sort of the significant trees and the, and the, I can't, I can't remember what you talked with the character rock, I think you called it.
Yeah, there's a holder.
There are markers and, you know, identifying factors to slow you down, all of which are, you know, support, you know, some, some mitigation of the concern I've got, but it's, I, I just wanted to raise it to see how much thought, you know, could go into it and has gone into it so far, so thank you for that. I think that's got it for me for now.
Hey, before we go on to the next person, I have an update on the white color.
Okay, thank you.
It's this regal white color, so it's a fairly, fairly white, white.
And that's a vertical standing seam, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if people do not have any additional comments within the commission to make at this time, what I would suggest is before we go to motions, let me just get a feeling of the commissioners. I am assuming we would want to have a motion that includes at least in part or in whole the 12 conditions that are included as part of the motion. Do I hear anybody amongst the commissioners who disagree with that? Once, twice, three times, closed. What I would like to do to simplify the process is it sounds like condition number one is going to be where we have most of the final conversation before we make any decisions. I would like us to go through conditions two through 12 and determine if we need to reword those to include or not include certain things, then go back to one and then when we're done, we can consider a motion regarding the, the development. Does anybody have a disagreement with that amongst the commissioners? Once, twice, three times. All right, so if we could put up the subject to following conditions page, please, starting with items one through, well, half of eight, but if we can get two pages up, fine, otherwise we'll just start with the first one and we'll, we'll, we'll not address number one at the moment, we'll, we'll go through items two through seven and then we'll go through eight through 12.
Yes, Chair, I've created a Word document, does this work? I can make it a little bit.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, that's, that's perfectly fine. So what I'm going to do is we're going to leave one alone for the moment because I know that's where we, we'll, we'll have most of the discussion. Let's go through with the rest of these, I will read the section, the condition and then if people amongst the commissioners have questions or concerns, please voice them after I have finished speaking that specific condition. Condition number two, if a building permit is required and the applicant has not submitted a complete application for a building permit within three years from the date of this notice or within two years from the decision on appeal from the final design review decision, design review approval shall expire. Do any commissioners wish to speak on that? Once, twice, three times. Condition number three, prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall provide documentation in a form acceptable to the city that the proposed affordable units and affordability level will be maintained consistent with the requirements of MICC 19.11.040 subsection C. Does anybody wish among the commissioners to comment on that? Once, twice, three times. Condition number four, prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall provide documentation that the exterior and interior finishes of the affordable units will be the same as the other units as required by MICC 19.11.040 subsection D, subsection five. That kind of relates to number one, if people feel like they want to discuss the specific item or not decide what to do with four until after we've discussed one, that's fine by me.
Four is a go for me.
I.
So you're good with four?
Have a point of clarification, if anyone knows, were the affordable units detailed as to the specific ID on the plans or is that still pending?
There was a plan sheet that identified which units would be affordable.
Okay.
And that this is a code requirement actually to not have, you know, different or substandard finishes for affordable units compared with the non-affordable units. So this is simply asking for, you know, documentation after.
Right, yeah, I understand that, I was just asking for my clarification if those units had been identified since we didn't get into that in anyone's presentation.
Yes.
I have no problems with four, thank you.
Okay, do any other commissioners wish to speak out regarding item, condition four? Once, twice, three times. Condition number five, prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall submit an affordable housing agreement as required by MICC 19.11.040 subsection F. Does any commissioner wish to speak on this condition? Once, twice, three times, moving on. Condition number six, the applicant shall provide proof of built green four-star certification within 180 days of issuance of a final certificate of occupancy or such later date as may be allowed by the code official for good cause by submitting a report analyzing the extent credits were earned towards such rating. Does any commissioner wish to speak regarding condition number six? Once, twice, three times. Condition number seven, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy and agreement providing the right of pedestrian use of the through block connection in a form and substance acceptable to the city attorney shall be recorded with King County. Does any commissioner wish to speak on condition number seven? Once, twice, three times. Condition number eight, prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall provide a landscaping maintenance plan documenting how all landscaping on the subject property will, number one, be maintained in good condition by the property owner in a manner consistent with MICC 19.11.070 subsection B, subsection two, subsection E and two, provide 100% cover of ground cover plans within two years consistent with MICC 19.11.070 subsection B, subsection two, subsection B, subsection three. Does anybody wish to speak regarding condition number eight? Once, twice, three times. Condition number nine, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of constructing street improvements on 77th Avenue Southeast pursuant to MICC 19.11.120 subsection B. The amount shall be determined by the city engineer based on a proportionate share of the corridor-wide improvements. Do any commissioners wish to speak regarding condition number nine? Once, twice, three times. Condition number 10, prior to the building permit issuance, a landscape plan showing branching height for all street trees on city property shall be provided. Does any commissioner wish to speak regarding condition number 10? Once, twice, three times. Prior to building permit issuance, an updated parking management plan specifying the proposed time limits for public parking spaces shall be submitted. The time limits shall be consistent with MICC 19.11.130 subsection B, subsection five, subsection B. Does anybody wish to speak regarding condition number 11? Once, twice, three times. Condition number 12, prior to building permit issuance, all detailed design for the utilities, including water, sewer and storms, excuse me, and storm systems and all design detail for frontage work in the public right of way and in the private property shall be provided for review. Does any commissioner wish to speak regarding condition number 12?
I have a question about this, Robin, this one would be for you. Are we talking about sort of above ground, what do they call them, RPBS and things like that? Like I'm thinking about the one outside of Pagliacci's, just, just west of Pagliacci's and that horrible plastic, you know, weird putty-looking dome over, you know, some utility valve or something or I don't know exactly what it is, is this the kind of thing we're talking about?
This would be the kind of thing, so all utilities. This would be the kind of thing, so all utilities, and I know it wasn't part of your question, but I think in this case the RPBA is actually going to be underground. So this would be just that here.
I, I, I think this, this speaks to the, the, the sort of overall concern that, that lack of forethought about that kind of thing can take what's, you know, I would argue, a beautiful Pagliacci's building and even the landscape that they put in along the south end of that parking lot and just dump this ugly thing in the middle of it.
That is a valid concern in this case. I made an effort to front-load those kinds of concerns so to look ahead, even if there weren't specific, you know, code requirements at this stage, but to think ahead about what the implications of construction might be. So the extent possible, we tried to front-load that review and ensured that, you know, construction wouldn't cause something, you know, not to comply later down the road.
Or required to be covered by a putty-shaped dome that someone bought at the Home Depot. Yeah, I, I don't have a change to it. I just want to make sure.
Specific color, is that what you're saying?
I might have a bone to pick about that. I, I'm not saying one way or the other. I don't have a change to it. I just wanted to clarify what this is really referring to.
Perfectly fine. Do any other commissioners wish to speak regarding condition number 12? Once, twice, three times. This does not stop us from looking at two through 12 a second time. I just want to make sure we're all in the same direction before we go to the meat of the matter. Let's go back to condition number one. All aspects of the proposed development shall be in substantial conformance with the detailed information submitted with this application, i.e. elevations, perspective drawings, colors, materials, font, size of sign lettering and relationship and layout of the approved wording and graphics as depicted by exhibit one. I am assuming that the commissioners would like to speak on this specific condition.
Well, I think collectively we need to come up with a decision.
Can I ask a question to the applicant first, and that is, are you happy with the proposal as submitted for this meeting today?
Yes.
Meaning, and that's a loaded question, I apologize, but.
We are very happy with the proposal as presented to me.
Okay, so, so if offered the opportunity to delay the, your approval by a month and take another run at a darker brick or something like that, you wouldn't, you wouldn't volunteer to do that. You'd rather get your, your approval today?
Correct.
Is that a fair statement? Okay.
Fair statement.
Good, okay. I just wanted to check that before we have our discussion, you guys, so thank you.
We made peace moving away from Coal Creek.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
I said we've made peace from our moving away from the dark brick color, the Coal Creek brick color. So we like our mid-tone brick now.
Okay, uh, so we, we seem to have reached an accommodation on one issue. We have a second issue. I guess I'm quite asking if we need to discuss the second issue that has been discussed earlier. If I need to be more specific, I can be more specific.
Yeah, you lost me, Commissioner Irwin. Can you clarify?
The question is, are we going to reject this proposal because it doesn't have dark brick on it?
Well.
Well, the other question is, is are we going to reject this proposal because of the white that's being used as part of the proposal?
Fair enough.
So there's, there's two issues. It sounds like we are at peace regarding the, the darker brick color that has been provided us with this proposal. I guess my question is, are we at peace with the white used for this proposal?
I, I just want to go on record and say I'm not peace, I'm not at peace with it.
Okay, are you of the opinion?
Yeah, so I, I wanted to ask, oh, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask the, the design team if they had explored just a reduction in the extent of that brick and, and kind of looking at a metal ground. It feels like it swung, in my opinion, a little too white and too, it, it just, it feels like a, a different project in, in some ways that I think have been an improvement, but in other ways I, I think stand out too much, in the spirit of public commentary, don't feel as integrated and grounded.
Commissioners, are, would you mind if I put this forward as a question? And if you like it, we can put it forward to the folks with the proposal.
Yeah, it is a good question.
So the question? Okay, so the question that I would assume you want to ask is, how did you get to this color of white?
Well, I would rephrase that a little bit and, and ask if explorations of just rationing that Coal Creek color maybe with different materiality, you have three masses and maybe just focusing the darker color in one of the three masses in such a way, just limiting the extent of that dark color. I feel like you took, you took that commentary to heart and that's greatly appreciated. But I do think that the resultant building once built, they'll, they'll potentially be a public reaction that would have it stand out. It doesn't, it, you know, it feels less integrated and grounded in the site and even though, you know, the revision in response to the public commentary of the dark brick was, was worked through, I, I personally think that it could cause issues swinging too far in the other direction. And so I didn't know if there was explorations or material or massing studies that just limited the extent of the initial material selection rather than eliminating it.
Okay, there's a whole bunch of questions there being asked. So I think, I, I would ask the, the folks who put forward the proposal, I myself, how did you come to decide this color of white? I think that in the process of answering that, you'll answer most or all of Commissioner Zar's questions and commentary.
Um, to kind of expand on what I said earlier, in my personal opinion, as a resident of Mercer Island, some of the existing development, much of the existing development is mired too, too far in the mid-range tonal spectrum. I crave a little bit more contrast in the, in the architecture. So we're really happy to be using like black windows, for example. It lends a crispness and a modernity to the design. And when we moved away from the dark brick, the charcoal tone brick, we were moving into the mid-range of the tonal spectrum. So we craved contrast with that medium tone. And we did reduce the amount of brick from our previous study session. We had, you know, fairly large, like sculptural blank walls that we've added more windows to, so the absolute amount of brick is definitely reduced and there's not large stretches of it as much as we presented in the study session. So to that end, we did reduce the amount of brick. But also, there is a desire to make the project, you know, somewhat broken down in scale, but we don't want to get into the U-Village effect where we're applying very different expressions to each of the building masses. So that's, we wanted to keep the palette simple with the, the white, the gray, the dark gray, the charcoal, and the brown. So I'm not sure that that fully answers the question, but because of the contrast of the dark brick, we replaced that contrast in the other materials with the white.
But let me ask a follow-up question, if I may, and then I'm certain Commissioners are, will have more specific questions to ask. Do you believe that where the white is dominant for the proposal, that existing greenery that's also proposed will soften that white as perceived by people when they walk around or view the, the proposal?
Very much so. A perennial issue with us presenting buildings for designer views, we have to kind of make the trees transparent or eliminate them altogether, otherwise you literally couldn't see our building. So there will be substantial softening by the surrounding trees. You won't, you will rarely get the straight-on view of the building, and even if you're standing in the Met Market parking lot, looking due west, you will have the street trees for the lower, you know, portion of the building.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are, do you have any further questions?
I, I think it is helpful, instead of maybe having the, the board document up that we actually referenced the elevations during this discussion, if you don't mind.
Happy to do that. Can I also just offer one quick process item? If the Design Commission chooses to either remand the decision back to staff or add different conditions, you know, approve with conditions but change the conditions, you'll need to make findings about how the, the current recommended approval does not need code, and then tie, if you make a change, tie that to a code section. So any, any condition needs to be tied to a finding, and if the, your decision is to remand it, that decision should be tied to a finding about the code. So just, just offering a little process item there, and I will bring up the plan set and elevations here in one moment.
Okay, while you're doing that, Ms. Chang, you wish to speak?
Yeah, yeah, once Robin pulled out that elevation, I just have two points I want to make.
And we have elevations. I'm so sorry. There we are.
Yeah, so, right, so if you see, like, the, we are concerned about the, the white facade. So if you see that, like, in the middle block, it's actually, there is a feature tree in front of it. So we, we had that conversation with the, with ownership. We are actually considered that as a, as a, like, painting background. So the tree going to be pretty dominant if you look at it from the street. So that's one point. And the second one is, if you look at the 77th, so we, we explored all kinds of, like, color tone at that location, and the one determination is we think that area, like, it got less solar exposure, so we think it should be a more bright color instead of the rest of, rest of the building. So that's why we can't, we, we are, we only studying the white color and the more bright color. So that's how we, like, kind of the original concept, why we, we kind of choose a lighter tone. Yeah, that's just my, some background information.
Okay, thank you. Do any other commissioners wish to speak up regarding condition number one?
Can we move through the other elevations?
Clarification question, looking at this elevation relative to the rendering, it looks like in between the sort of blocks of the upper residential floors that move forward, you've got the charcoal color in, as the recessed, in the rendering that is also part of this presentation, it's all white.
Yeah, we, we, that was an error in the rendering that we fixed today, so we presented it correctly in our presentation, but yeah, it's intended to have the charcoal at the back.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a, that's a valuable piece of.
Can we read that image, please?
The, the rendering that I, we reviewed, you know, before the meeting showed it all in white, and it's, it's pretty striking. There's a lot of white.
You want.
Still is, but.
You want me to show?
Could you show your 3D rendering, yeah, of that west block from the northwest corner?
This afternoon, actually.
You, the applicant team will probably be quicker than I am on finding the correct rendering, so feel free to take over.
I think you have to unshare your screen. This is the correct rendering.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a nice difference between that and the, the one that we were reviewing before the meeting.
I agree. So I think that unless there needs to be further discussion regarding condition number one, I would like to have a motion put forward that will, that will accept the recommended motion, including conditions one through 12. If we do not pass that motion, then we will need to go back to condition number one, which I am assuming would be the sticking point, and determine what we want to do regarding that, or we send it back. Do I have a motion?
I, I have a question, comment first, if you don't mind, Chair.
Sure.
Would the design team consider the recessed portions along the north through block match the charcoal recesses so that it just limits the extent of white along the north? I don't know if that's, if I'm making sense there, but am I allowed to annotate?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a nice.
Like in the area here.
Yep. Um, yeah. Again, this is a north facing, so it would be a little potentially dark, as Lou cautioned, but from a massing standpoint, I can see, you know, the insets would all be charcoal and it would be very harmonious from this end to end.
Is it wood or, or is it wood-like or is it charcoal already at the first floor, at the, at, at the sidewalk level?
Charcoal already at the first floor. Are you talking mid-block right here?
Correct.
Yes.
And so is it, would it be the same material that would just carry up the wall potentially, and then you'd have the wood vertical screens between the balconies?
The base is inset further, further inset than the.
Sure.
For, but yeah, it would be, it could be the same charcoal material.
I, I, I think the reason why that might be beneficial is just based on the McDonald's parking and vehicular access, there will always be a reveal away until that lot is demoed and potentially rebuilt. But this north elevation is a very prominent elevation, just as this is a very prominent corner. And limiting the white just based on on the push and pull of your elevation there, I think. I can't, I think the brick end caps it on the other side, correct? You've got sort of another mass there, so just some, I I would. Suggest looking into into that personally, but. Because that is, it is a very visible elevation. It contributes to the rhythm of the building you've already established.
Yep.
Okay, let's go back to condition number one. And well, first off, does do any of the Commissioners disagree with the suggestion?
I'm fine with it.
I do not disagree. Okay. Okay, let us then go back to condition number one and let's do some wordsmithing.
Well, can I ask a question? Can we just, Megan, this would be this would be for you and Lou. You know, you guys were happy with the project as presented. Is is this a decision you guys are willing to make on the fly and can you make it on the fly? Right? Here in the moment? Because where this is going is that we we would approve this project with that change assumed. And I don't know if that's something that that we can do, that we can foist upon you.
Um, is it a, is the color? Um. What I'm trying to get at is right now the inset portion is a cement board panel. To be frank, that's to conserve some cost. Is is an option to possibly match the charcoal color? In the paint on that cement board panel in the area that we're talking, maintaining? The corrugated material at the base. We tried to keep the the more expensive materials and where people are actually, you know, touching and feeling and interacting. So we could keep the charcoal corrugated metal at the base and consider painting the hardy to match.
Yeah, I would assume it would be the same material that you're doing elsewhere on the building.
Right. I I would assume as well. So Commissioners Zar, is that going to work for you?
That would be the ideal scenario, but understanding, you know, the costs of development. I I think that there is a texture in the metal paneling, so that that of course is the ideal scenario. But even if it were downgraded into a painted hardy, I think it would help.
And to be clear, let me go to materials board. It's not party panel per se, it's got the, it's got texture to it.
Oh, is it the horizontal lap?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Like a certainty or something?
Yeah. But it has text, it's not flat panel. But it's.
It's it's horizontal lap siding. It's there. Right? It's not the flat panel over a rain screen.
I, as long as it has a little texture to it, I think if the colors match, I I think that serves the purpose personally. I don't. I wouldn't want to increase cost of development, you know, but I I think it does, it does help break up that elevation.
I agree. So we'd be, I think we can make safely that decision as long as it's. Like a paint color, that's not us adding cost for the owner unilaterally here in the meeting.
So is this something that we feel needs to be included in the conditions? Or is this an agreement that would be specified somewhere else?
It's a condition.
Okay, so it is a condition. So let's go back to condition number one. And let's do some wordsmithing.
I'll like start sharing once you're. Or assuming you want to go back to the word document, Chair.
I'm sorry, I want to pose one.
And.
I.
I was gonna also ask, Robin, are you, are you having any indigestion over this?
It's. I'm a little torn. I it's not a drastic change. I still. Meaning, I think. It, I, again, I recommended approval with conditions of the existing design because I believed it met code. I think this this small change, it would also meet code. I'm hesitating when it comes to. Adding a condition of approval because there needs to be a code reason to do that. So I'll defer to my director Jeff, if you're still on, if you have thoughts on this. I I don't think there's harm, I'm just a little queasy about requiring a change when the existing design already complies.
Robin, does it help, you know, just for discussion points? I think that there there there's a very clear then within the code having to do with bright colors. And I think what we're is we're negotiating around, I shouldn't negotiating, we're we are suggesting. Ways to. To increase the comfort with the amount of bright by less.
By less.
But I think it's very much in line, I think it's very much in line with the code and specific clauses within the code.
Thank you, that helps.
And to be clear, we're not making a suggestion. If it's a condition of approval.
Fair, okay.
And and if, and we can't approve this without that condition and then have them change it without coming back to the Design Commission. Right? It's it it's sort of an all or nothing thing and and Robin's right, we have to, we have to, we have to hang it securely on a on a provision in the code. Which I think you've identified, we just got to pull up the right number.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's, there's.
Go, go find a good number and while we're doing that, let's wordsmith condition number one.
Chair, I see.
Jeff, do you have a comment?
Chair, if I can just jump in for a second.
Sorry, go ahead.
For the record, Jeff Thomas with the planning and development department. Based on the dialogue here, Commissioner Perez, I believe it was, I think is circling the bullseye there with the. Finding on the record to to lead to this change. So I think we can produce the the code citation, I think we're good to go on, comfortable with that, thank you.
Very good. I will bring up the, I'll add just. To make it easy to edit for us, I'll just see, add the code section to the list of conditions, we can, you know, edit together. I'll go ahead and share my screen, I think. Megan, if you're done, yeah, excellent. See. Okay, can you all see the word document?
Yep.
Excellent. So here is the, I think, code provision that Commissioner Perez was speaking to, did I get that right? And so it was the the concern that this this white was. A bright color and is being used for more than trim and accents, therefore. Adding black to a portion of the north elevation would. Bring this design into compliance, am I getting that right?
Yes, that would be the way that I would say it. You're implying that it wasn't in compliance before, but I think that, I think that what we're doing as a commission is we we are, we are placing white. In a bright color. So we are categorizing, cataloging white as a bright.
Feel free to help me wordsmith here as I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose something slightly different, sorry, Robin. Well, the the section that, well, leave it just for a moment, but the section that you've called out reads, bright colors should not be used only or. Bright colors should be used only for the trim and accents if the use is consistent with the building design and other design requirements. I I believe a better section of the code to use is number eight, which is variation of materials. Maybe this is, that's not quite right either, but a variation of materials should be used to assist in the creation of visually interesting experience. That to me sort of gets more to the spirit of what we're doing, even though it talks about materials, I guess we're we're asking for a change in materials that also results in a change in color. But a six is speaking just to trim and accents, it doesn't help us.
Okay, good, good point.
Does that, does that seem reasonable?
I I think, I think that that's, that actually gives us a little bit stronger foundation to stand on, yeah.
Very good. I, so can you help me articulate? What it was about this criterion or that the proposed change that'll help the code? Be better met or to to be consistent with code? Breaking up the white on the north elevation to add variation or?
Commissioners Zar?
Yeah, I wanted to, I I think what would help is if you were to copy and. Is this the portion of the code here that you copied and pasted in? Okay. So should be used to assist in the creation of visual interesting experience. So I think that there was a. What we're doing is we're breaking up the continuity of the application of one exterior material. In order to contribute to the visual interest of the project overall.
By changing.
Yeah, there you go.
By changing. The white, you know, right after overall, kill the period and just say, yeah, by changing. The white. Vertical metal siding. Between grid lines C point five. And H point five. To. A painted hardy siding.
You could say, it's it it's not specifying hardy, but I think they just called it out as cement board.
Painted cement board siding, thank you.
But textured, we wanted it to also read textured, so it.
Well, to to match the approved painted hardier around the rest of the building or painted cement board board siding around the rest of the building. Megan, Lou, does that track? With what we're talking about in your mind?
Yes, although to be technical, the existing mid block siding that we're talking about is. Painted cement board siding with a white color to match the metal, the metal's only at the like head. Seventy seven, so we're we're literally swapping the paint color.
Oh, that's already the lap?
Yes.
Cement board siding, okay, good, that's.
That's why I said we couldn't really add costs by like making it the charcoal metal.
So Robin, all we're doing then is we're we're changing the paint color. Between grid line C point five and H point five.
Yes.
To. The, do you have a paint, well, to the to the charcoal gray to match the rest of the project?
Yes, we don't have the exact. Paint color yet.
There a material I can refer to, was it like metal siding or the charcoal gray matching?
The charcoal corrugated siding. Used elsewhere on the project.
Okay, there we go.
Would there, would there be any other areas in the building that has this recessed condition? That you might want to consider? Sort of making this a language throughout the project that it's kind of like the gasket between some of the masses that are. Projected or proud of that surface?
We're gonna have to take a look in in the courtyard. I think, and look for those, but as far as. Facing the street, we've got the inset notch facing seventy eight. And we've got the inset area above the lobby that are currently the white metal siding.
But those are not between white clad masses.
No, yeah, our courtyard is substantially white right now, so we'll probably want to.
I don't think that's necessarily a condition that we would impose personally, I will let others speak, but.
On the internal courtyard, right?
Yeah, on the right, but but that's.
Your call.
That's your call, and so. I don't, I don't know if that needs to be clarified, if they make a change to the internal courtyard or if we make that more suggestive. Because it is part of this presentation for approval, so if they do make a a color change there. Would they be required to come back for approval or do they have that freedom?
It comes down to what substantial conformance is. So if it's, you know, one square inch of paint, probably not. But I, if it, you know, if it is a whole facade, yes.
On the interior courtyard?
Oh, pardon me, I misunderstood, I thought. Well.
We're just talking about the interior courtyard, which.
Is it visible from the the street? Can you remind me, the interior courtyard, isn't it visible from?
It could be because of the church building at the southwest corner is low.
Yeah, yeah.
Just checking the code to see what triggers design review, bear with me.
I I just, I bring this up because it it it's as a design team, as you start moving forward. And if this change has an impact that has a ripple effect that we might not be considering in this session. I I could see the potential of that courtyard, you know, decision being made not to force the. Design team to necessarily come back or as a question to the commission. If it is visible from the street, is this an area that we want to look closer at?
Well, or we, do we just add a line to the same? Condition that says if the applicant wants to change an interior facade or a facade of the internal courtyard to this same gray. They have the Design Commission's approval to do so.
Yeah, that would be good on my side. Just to avoid having.
Once you have that first answer to the first question, let us know if you think that's viable. Please.
Yes, I. It's not abundantly clear to me, and this is the kind of thing that I would want to do a. Deep dive into the code to answer, I think, however, they proposed solution of, you know. Similar change to the interior courtyard would be acceptable, I think, is a fine addition to this decision, just to give that flexibility.
Megan, Lou, does that work for you?
Yeah, because obviously Lou and I need to explore it, but I can see us wanting to to change the color of the south side of that bar. So that we're not like artificially applying. Paint color to one side, I want it to look like a mass. And that would help break it up, yeah, so. Yes, I would like some freedom to introduce the gray into the courtyard if. We deem it looks good.
So Robin, do you want us to write that out?
Yeah, I'm wondering, please, and I'm wondering if it's an appropriate. Thing to piggyback on condition one, first I see I made a typo on the exhibit number, but to say something like. Provided. You know, copy language here and then also tack on. And the interior courtyard may be painted with the charcoal gray matching the gray getting exciting, something like that. Is that matching where the Design Commission's going?
I like how Vice Chair said it earlier, it was so concise, it was. And if it were, it would be deemed approved by the commission or something like that, how how did you say it?
I I can never remember things that I've said three minutes after I said it, so.
You were dropping pearls.
It was at the applicant's discretion, I think was the general idea, it, you know.
But that it would be approved, it wouldn't, it wouldn't qualify it as a, you know, substantial. You know, substantial. Conformance issue that would bring them back.
Yeah, I think the design commission approves. The applicant to.
How about any further exploration related to the replace, you know, the changing of color from white to charcoal?
At the internal courtyard.
At the internal courtyard. Would be acceptable by.
Or, or how about the design commission grants the applicant?
Sure.
Style wise, does this wording work simply because this will be part of your decision? And these are just the, you know, the conditions on your decision, so just since I don't each each condition say, you know, the design commission grants this. You're approving this on the condition that boom, 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 does this?
Yeah, that's good.
We add.
They repaint portions of the interior courtyard to be the charcoal gray matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on the other sides of the building, yeah, at their discretion.
Yeah, that's what I, the applicant, yeah, you can.
At the applicant's discretion, yeah, I'm good with that.
And then we needed to add the. Well, let me make sure I capture, so this is your finding about how the eight here is met, and then we need to add. The condition down here that matches that, so provided. The north elevation. Be painted. See. Between these areas be painted this way.
Provided north of the sink color, north of the logic and paint color. Paint color between grid lines C five and H five. Becomes. The charcoal gray. Matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on the other sides of the building.
Then. Something like.
Yeah, that feels pretty good.
Okay. When you're done, Robin, let me know and I'll read it out loud.
I think we're okay, go ahead and we'll catch any errors when you read it out loud.
So, okay, so would we keep the code and finding above number one, or would we put it, would we rearrange it anywhere else?
This would be the finding and code section would be part of your decision, so. When we, when I produce the decision for reflect, to reflect your decision from this hearing, you'll have a list of code sections, your findings, and then at the end. So you can imagine a break here, but. And your conditions will start at the end of your decision.
Okay, so just reading, let me, let me see the top part, because I just want to read it out loud, so everybody hears it as well as the revised number one, so if we can go to the find, the code above the findings, so I can read it all off, please, thank you. So MICC nineteen dot eleven dot one one zero subsection B subsection eight variation of materials. A variation of building materials should be used to assist in the creation of a visually interesting experience. Design Commission finding, breaking up the continuity of the exterior material on the north elevation will contribute to the visual interest of the project overall by changing the paint color between grid lines C dot five and H dot five. To be the charcoal gray matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on the other sides of the building. Rereading condition number one, all aspects of the proposed development shall be in substantial conformance with the detailed information submitted with its application, i.e. Elevations, perspective drawings, colors, materials, font, size of sign lettering, and relationship and layout of the proposed wording and graphics. As depicted by exhibit, is it exhibit three or is it a different exhibit number?
It is, I think I made an error in the initial staff report.
Okay, as depicted by exhibit three provided, I don't think we need the comma after the provided, provided the north elevation paint color between grid lines C five, C dot five and H dot five becomes charcoal gray matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on other sides of the building. Further, the applicant may repaint portions of the interior courtyard to be the charcoal gray matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on the other sides of the building at the applicant's discretion. So first, are the applicants. At least semi comfortable with the wording for what we've done with condition number one?
Robin, this is me being the English major, may repaint one line up from the bottom, it should just say may paint portions of the interior courtyard, thank you.
Okay, so are the applicants comfortable with the revised condition number one? Do they feel like they are being put into a corner, okay, so they are comfortable. Commissioners, does any, I'm sorry, did you wish to speak further?
I think under the finding. Something about the finding is not right. Breaking up the continuity of the exterior material in the north elevation will contribute to the visual interest of the project as overall. Period. The paint color between grid line C five and H five to the charcoal gray matching the charcoal corrugated siding used on this side of the buildings will achieve this goal.
I think you just get rid of by and capitalize change.
By.
Change, changing the paint color. Will achieve this. Do we need to reference the code section in that two sentences, or is it clear enough?
I would say would meet code requirements will, you know, will, will be.
Be consistent.
Meet the intent of this code section.
Yeah, so how about we'll meet this code criterion?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think you can.
The above code.
B on line three.
And one more time?
Delete the B on line three.
Changing the. To be, yeah, you don't need the B, just get rid of H five to slash B.
Okay. Okay, reading it again. Breaking up the continuity of the exterior material of the north elevation will contribute to the visual interest of the project overall. Changing the paint color between grid line C dot five and H dot five to the charcoal gray matching the charcoal coordinated siding used on the other sides of the building will meet this code criterion.
May, I'll, just to make it clear. I find it helpful in reading the decisions that I understand where conditions came from, just to reference them in the staff report, so is it okay if I add? Like a condition of approval reflecting this finding has been added to this decision, just.
Sure, do we need to specify that it's condition number one?
I don't typically, we certainly could, but that's not something I've typically done stylistically, just knowing that it's in that list.
No worries. Okay. If Robin is comfortable, if the develop, if the applicants are comfortable and if the commissioners are comfortable. I am asking for a motion. Considering the application.
I'll do it since I was the crankiest about it. So I move to accept, I don't know how to phrase it, but I moved to approve this applicant.
Recommended motion with conditions.
I moved to approve the recommended motion with conditions.
I second the motion.
Andrea, do you want me to, do you want the entire motion to be read out, or are you good with what we've got?
Chair, we do need to read the motion, we've read the conditions already and they're on the record, but if we could read the motion.
Sure, the motion is to grant Johnson Architects design approval for the construction of a new mixed use building in the town center located at twenty five seventy seventy seventh Avenue Southeast. And twenty eight eighty five seventy eighth Avenue Southeast as shown in exhibit one, subject to the following conditions and further conditioned as follows. Do you wish for me to read all the rest?
Nope, that's good, Chair, and I'm sorry, but I missed who was the second.
We don't have a second yet, we're.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody say they seconded.
I second it.
Oh, had somebody, okay, thank you.
Was that Anthony, you said it as I looked away.
Yes, I sent it, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody among the commissioners who wish to speak against the motion? Going once, twice, three times, we're done. Calling the vote. Vice Chair Brant.
Aye.
Commissioner Granbois.
Ms. Dine.
Commissioner McPherson.
Aye.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioners are.
Aye.
Chair Irwin states yes. Motion passes.
I just want to add. To. I just wanted to say that the considerations between the design sessions and where we landed. And the work that the team has put into it has been greatly appreciated. So you have a very handsome building there.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and comments.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, may we move on to other business? We will move on to other business, I welcome Jeff Thomas, interim CPD director for a director's report.
Thanks, Chair, we've had a lengthy evening here tonight, so I'll be brief.
Megan Lou, you guys can go if you want. Good night, sorry, Jeff.
Good night.
There was some good discussion tonight, and so thanks to the commission and thanks to the staff. Robin in particular, who picked this up from another staff member. After the project had started, but. Lots happening in the department, lots of permits still continue to move through the system, be processed, and. We've got some legislative activities underway as well. You may have heard at some point, the city council set the docket for twenty twenty one back at the end of last year. The docket essentially is a roster of. Potential comprehensive plan amendments and development code amendments that the council would like the city to consider this year, so. The planning commission has had a couple meetings so far in twenty twenty one, starting to take some of that work on. And that work will continue to move. Through the process, the legislative review process and ultimately come to city council at some point. Throughout twenty twenty one for various final actions of approval or not, so. One other thing I'll mention, I'm not sure whether this came up at one of your prior meetings or not, whether it was before the end of the year or since, I think this is your first meeting this year, so clearly not in twenty twenty one yet, but. We did make some changes to our permit fee schedule for twenty twenty one specifically related to land use permitting, moving a little bit more towards a deposit and hourly review basis. That was something we had some lengthy discussion with city council about during their budget deliberations and leading up to the approval of the twenty twenty one permit fee schedule. One thing that you might find interesting as a result of that is. We worked with Robin and Andrea and all the staff in the department. To institute project permit time tracking using our permit track system, track it oddly enough is the name of it, the city uses. And so we did some really good beta testing on that at the end of twenty twenty for a few months, and we continue with that here in twenty twenty one to implement the P schedule. So I think that's probably it for this evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have this evening, otherwise that will conclude my report, thank you.
Jeff, you had a full time and a part time position that you guys were opening up, I think the last time we met, have you guys filled those positions with reviewers yet?
We didn't fill the halftime position in the permit center. I believe it was a permit coordinator halftime position, so that has been filled. We do have a senior policy analyst position that has been approved as part of the twenty twenty one budget, but is not funded until July one. So we will be working here in short order on filling that position in a timely fashion. I think. And then we had a planner position carry over. That position is a contract position at this point, but it is funded for the entire year, so we did have an employee continue on with us here in twenty twenty one. In that, that slot per se. Does that answer your, those are the ones I can.
I think so, I remember you talking about a full time planner and a halftime permit specialist, so yeah, it sounds like both of those are staffed.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, well, I did going once, twice and three times in my head, so maybe Chair, I'll turn it back over to you, so.
Okay, announcements and communications, does anybody have anything else to report?
I do, Chair, so staff would like to bring forward to the commission that we are proposing to a just. Commission start time to. This is a multifaceted request. It enables us to. Get more participation from the community, what we've noticed from our boards and commission meetings that have been adjusted to an earlier time. Is that more of the public is attending these meetings and able to participate in these meetings. And then it also reduces it, so if you start early, we get done earlier, when we do have really big projects to review. As of now, we're nearing ten o'clock, you guys and staff, we've been working since eight thirty this morning, so it makes for long days, it's fine if you guys want to keep the meeting at seven, but we wanted to propose these things. To you is it gives us just a little bit more flexibility to end early. Involve the public potentially a little bit more, so we're looking to get a consensus one way or the another from the commission this evening.
Would that be two PM on a weeknight?
I'm sorry, what was that, Chair?
Would that be two PM on a weekday?
No, six PM on a weekday.
Oh, excuse me, six PM on a.
So we're just looking at adjusting it by one hour.
Do we know which weekday, are we talking Wednesdays?
It is the commissions, per the code, the commission is the one who chooses the day and time of your meetings. So that could be discussed as well, I suppose, I would have to. Chime in with Jeff and make sure that he's okay with that change.
I'm not opposed to six PM, but I have standing meetings Wednesdays and Thursdays that would not allow me to attend at that time.
And that Wednesdays or Thursdays are kind of the days that it would. End up needing to be Tuesdays are out, as those are city council nights, and we generally try not to do commission meetings on Mondays and Fridays.
I have more flexibility potentially Thursday than I would Wednesday, though.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
I have a.
Forward.
I also have a standing meeting Wednesday that ends typically by six, but I couldn't. Promise it, so Thursdays would also be a better day for me as well.
Jeff. Thursday's okay with me.
Jeff, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Are Thursdays good for, or okay with you, Jeff?
Sure. Sure, yeah, it's, I mean, we can certainly try it for a couple meetings, and if it's working for people, uh, great, if it's not, then we can go back to Wednesdays at seven, or, you know, whatever, whatever the, the consensus is, so.
Thursday works, uh, six or seven.
Are we settled on, what is it, is it first and third?
Yes, and we would like to, we're, we're second and fourth.
Oh, second and fourth, yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to keep second and fourth because we have planning commission on first and third, um, and it gets quite taxing on staff when we have two commission meetings in the same week. Because it's the same staff who are running both of those commissions.
So what would our next meeting be?
As of now, it is still to be determined, um, Robin might be able to jump in if she knows if there is something coming. Um, to my knowledge, there's not, I was going to send the cancellation for the first meeting in March, as we don't have anything for that meeting, um, don't believe we have anything for the second meeting in March as well, but I'm not sure any farther out than that.
Nothing on the horizon, you're right, Andrea.
So I will ask if there is a commissioner who is willing to either make a motion, or s- that if the chair wants to do a, do we have a consensus over moving to Thursday at six?
Okay, let's do a consensus vote, moving the meetings from Wednesdays at seven to Thursdays at six. Vice Chair Brandt?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Granbois?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Zar?
Aye.
Uh, Chair Irwin also says yes.
Should we also check in with Commissioner Supperno?
Andrea, can you do that, please?
Yes, I will check in with him, um, but seeing that we have six of you that are okay with it, I'll make sure he's okay with it, um, but that isn't for us, for you guys to make the decision to move it to Thursdays.
Okay. Uh, so next scheduled meeting is P P D at this point in time.
Correct.
Alrighty, um, if there are, is no other business? Okay.
I'll just say real quick, if it's all right, Rich, um, tonight, despite the lack of public input during the meeting, which surprised me, I thought we were gonna get a lot of speakers. Um, this building has been a hot topic for, I mean, a decade, but in reality, you know, we've been through this, this lot, this site for years and years and years with, you know, different applications and all the rest of it. Whether you liked what happened tonight or not, this was a major milestone in sort of the commission's history, the new, this is the first big building that's come through under the new code, right, that we wrote, um, I think we should all at some point just take some time to think about whether the new code has been successful or not, if it's served the community or not, right? How, you know, think a little bit about what the building would have looked like under the old code versus the new, I think, you know, I'm guessing there's gonna be a fair amount of talk about this as it goes forward, and certainly as it gets built. And I just, you know, I want to congratulate everybody for all their work, again, whether you were excited about it or not, then or now, it's a major milestone for, for everybody, and it, we all, all put a lot of work into it, so, you know, good job, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
The next. Uh, the next design commission meeting is still to be determined, there being no other business to come before the design commission. The time now is nine fifty-eight P M Pacific time, and the meeting is adjourned. However, as a reminder to commissioners, please stay seated until the city staff has terminated the Zoom broadcast. Good evening, stay safe, stay healthy, Andrea, can you and I talk on the Zoom one-on-one for a couple minutes after the meeting is concluded?
Yes, I have to stop the recording though, sir, first.
That's fine.